Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before our meeting begins tonight, we will have a divocation offered by Commissioner Twine, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, we're truly, we thank you for your grace and mercy. We ask for wisdom and guidance as we transact the business in this meeting today. And we also ask that you will send your healing powers to our friend, Mr. Girk. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Good ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to the great public where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, if you could call it over, please, one last time, number one.
Mr. White, here. Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Poole.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Lauper.
Here.
Ms. Lloyd.
Here.
Commissioners, you have in front of you the minutes of our meeting of October 11, 2016. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
I move for the -- we accept the minutes of the October 11 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. Thought objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission and the city regarding any of our ten items of regular business, please touch the microphone, give us your name, address, and share with us your thoughts, please. Anyone present wishing to address any of the regular agenda items? If not, then we will turn to a presentation by the Sandusky Bicentennial Commission.
My name is Eric Pope, Senator, and I'm the City Manager of the City of Sandusky. I'm just introducing a group of folks that, on behalf of the Bicentennial Commission, were able to travel, along with myself, from the city, as well as Commissioners Twine and Poole, to Duluth, Minnesota, to take a look at some things that they have happening there, particularly on their waterfront, and be prepared for our bicentennial. I'd like to give a big thank you to the Bicentennial Commission, the Erie County Community Foundation, for financial making that trip possible. You're going to hear from Coach Kidwell and Lee Lexikos from Cedar Fair about the details of that trip. I just wanted to be able to explain briefly why we selected Duluth. And then again, I want to thank Mackenzie Spriggs, my office, as well as Victoria Kerr and Angie Byington, who did a great deal of the planning and logistics for that trip. We had most of us on a pretty tight van, one van, all the way up to Minneapolis Airport to Duluth, and we made it work, and women and husbands out there hard work. But ultimately, we selected Duluth for this trip, and a little bit of the description of Duluth is they're a Great Lake city, they're the older Great Lake city, that not unlike Sandusky, had a very strong heyday during the industrial expansion of this part of the country, but also, as the iron ore industry collapsed, fell in very hard times. And that's not the part of the story that excited us. What excited us is, as we began our bicentennial vision process in early 2015, when we started to research smaller cities that had big comebacks, we stumbled on at least a few national stories that talked about Duluth as a comeback city, along the likes of Berlant, Vermont, Greenville, South Carolina. And so, we loved the story of Duluth, because again, they were a Great Lake city, they were a smaller city, not a huge city, and ultimately, they had reinvented themselves after the collapse of industry in the area, focusing on their waterfront and their culture and their history in ways that made them a destination and a place for people wanting to do business. So with that, again, thank you to those who made the trip possible. I will turn it over to Coach and the -- so, really quickly, I think I supposed to do this slide. Similarities to history, that was a shipping city, a lot of economic decline, waterfront destination, best practices that we learned from there that really activated the waterfront to revive economic development. They developed a plan, and people stuck with that plan over a period of decades. They focused on creating spaces for people and programming to help bring people together on the waterfront. And then ultimately, some of our takeaways that we heard from the group after we got back together, is that they built a beautiful trail system on the lake, they worked hard to extend their season beyond the summer in different ways, they really focus on community programming, as well as the indoor and outdoor facilities, to make that program possible.
Hi, we just wanted to let you know, this is the group that attended the trip with us, and we really had a cross-section of both public and private organizations represented. I think everybody brought something different. A couple of people are also here with us tonight. Larry, Amy, Mackenzie, is somebody else? Victor? Was, I know was. So, but anyway, it was a real elected group, and everybody, everybody saw something unique and different, so that was, that was very helpful. So, we met with a variety of people and organizations, the Duluth Convention Center, and they have a very strong focus on the waterfront, the City of Duluth, the actual City Department. Visit to Duluth is their conventions and Visitors Bureau, and then the tall ships event, which was going on at the same time, which we're going to duplicate to some extent here in the bicentennial in 2018.
Bike trail was one of the, one of the amenities that they've developed that really has had some exciting possibilities for us. In the, in the picture on the left, you'll see vaguely a railroad spur track, and the bike trail runs through that, through that, alongside that and adjacent to the highway. It's a five-mile bike trail, and you can see on the picture on the right, it's, we wanted to depict that it also runs through the downtown area, through neighborhoods. We wanted you to also see that it runs along Lake Superior and through developed park systems. It is, it is a very, a very well-prepared, well-managed bike trail. It also leads through some very developed, well-developed gardens. It moves through the Lee Erickson Gardens. There are some overlooks, as you can see in the, in the picture to the right, where people can stop and enjoy the scenery. In addition, let me go back just a second. In addition to this bike trail that is five mile, they also have developed a lake walk that is six miles long, that runs along Lake Superior, and it is a, it is an attraction for visitors, but it, just as a bike trail is, but it's also an amenity that, that is for local use and is, and is used often by, by those folks in the local communities. We are, how about stepping back a little?
So, one of the things that we spent a lot of time talking with the folks in Duluth was, you know, what they've done in their development that will help extend the season. And just to put things in perspective, the average temperature in Sandusky in December is thirty-seven, in Duluth it's twenty-two. So, it is very cold, and I know we all were taught here, well, it's too cold in the winter to do stuff, but it's not. First thing we talked about was Bentleyville. Bentleyville started as some Christmas lights in a gentleman by the last name of Bentley in his back backyard. And pretty soon, everybody came to look at it, and they outcrewed it, they moved it, they outcrewed that. One day, the mayor of Duluth said, "I've got a spot for you," and that's probably oversimplifying it, but they moved it downtown, right on the waterfront. Two hundred thousand-plus people walk through Bentleyville every November and December. So, it really activates the whole downtown community, and it's free. It's all done with volunteer hours. So, that was just one of the examples, how they extend the season. Of course, they have the tall ships festival there, they have a smaller version, thousands and thousands, if you can see in this picture, that's people lining up, ready to go through these ships, and that attracts several thousand people to each year. Infrastructure was unique. What you're seeing there is an entertainment pavilion, but the neat thing about it is, it's on several acres of land, and if you look at the picture on the right, you can see the land, it's just green space, but it allows them to, they've got it set up where they can gate it, so if you wanted to have ticketed revenue-producing events, you can do that, or if you want to have free events for the public, it's there. But they also included some of the structural icons in the architecture to help, again, brand Duluth. They do a lot of branding there that has really given Duluth some legs, and, you know, that's one of the things we've talked with the visitors who are here, is we have these incredible assets, how do we brand Sandusky to help the economic development of the area? Okay, so, here you're seeing, in the center picture, is the convention center?
And the convention center is right down on the water. You know, we do have convention facilities in the area. We have, of course, Kalahari has huge convention facilities, Somal has some, Lyman Harbor, Cedar Point has a little. This is all freestanding, it's not part of another hotel complex or anything, but again, what they told us, interestingly, was that their, this really extended their off-season business. They get more business November through April in their convention center than they do in the summer. So, they attract a lot of people from the Minneapolis area, that type of thing, they do weddings, it's, it's an incredible facility.
Thinking back with you about the trip and the makeup of our, our, our group, and with the, with the convention and Visitors Bureau folks that we talked with, with the city management and recreation people we talked with, and, and of course, with the Visit Duluth group that we talked, talked with, we, we found that, and I was in a unique position, being a member of the foundation community, I was able to just kind of sit back and watch our folks interact with their folks. And to, and what I saw was a lot of energy and a lot of knowledge, and also, a, a plan, a plan that was well-developed and was worked through for, for over fifty years, that, that brought Duluth out of, out of the devastation that they suffered with an economic decline in the fifties. And then we saw the plans go, go forward beyond that fifty years to a, to a St. Louis River Corridor project that began just, just two years ago and will finish soon. We also saw, we also saw a plan going forward that they had called Imagine Duluth 2035, which really gave us some, some, a lot of, a lot of thought for where do we go from, from here, from just that visit. And I want to say that all those experts that were there, that shared with us, were not, were not any more knowledgeable than our local experts that I watched and observed in the exchange of information. We, we have, I believe, the, the makeup of private and public interest to, to move forward, not to be like Duluth, because we can't be like Duluth, but we can be a better Sandusky, and perhaps that was my, my takeaway.
Any questions or comments? Commissioners, questions or comments, especially Commissioners Poole and Twine, who also attended the trip?
Mr. Chairman, I thought it was a great trip. It was a great learning experience about what we can do with what we have and the ideas and thoughts that we need to move forward. So, it's very exciting to be able to see some of those things come, come together in a place, and then know that we can still do some of those same things on the level that Sandusky can do it, so I, I think it was a great experience.
I thought one of the more interesting observations that you made was the importance of consistency over a very long period of time, and that takes a lot of work and a lot of conversation, and, you know, you're always at risk of developing a five-year master plan that gets left on a shelf and no one pays attention to it three years later, so that's terribly important. So, I appreciate your highlighting that particular point, because that's the only way we're ever going to get anything done.
Mr. Chairman.
Poole.
I also agree with everything that's been said. I want to echo what Mr. Kidwell said, that we actually do have, I believe, the expertise here in Sandusky to make a much better Sandusky. We don't have to go outside. The folks that were on that trip asked all the right questions, and as Coach said, we have the people here that can make this happen.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Chairman, I think we, as a commission, certainly owe everyone that took that trip a debt of gratitude. I'm old enough to remember the days when, due to economics, we couldn't take trips like that. We were prohibited from, from going that far to have a learning experience like that. And now, we, I think we understand collectively that we can't afford to not do things like that. That exchange of ideas is so critically important. I'm so optimistic that in a couple of years, we'll have people coming to visit us to learn how we turn it around and how, how we found a path forward, and we owe a debt of gratitude to you folks for kind of leading the way or shining a bright light on this, on this issue. So, thanks to all of you that did it.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. White.
I also wanted to send a thank you to everyone that was able to take the time out of their busy schedule to head to Duluth. I was able to go to Duluth last summer, and this is exactly what our city and residents should be doing, is going out to other places on a waterfront and seeing what they're doing and what we could be doing. So, it doesn't always have to be a large scale, you can take something that a city's doing and bring it to a Sandusky scale, and just having a plan and working towards it and being patient and just making sure that we have the dedication along the way, I think we'll get there.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for the trip, thank you for the effort, and thank you for your continued leadership on the bicentennial commissions. You know, you left yourself really open when you said you were old enough to remember. You probably remember when that tie was a style, too. You're just trying to fill the space while we take our seat. You left yourself quite open. You know, this tie is like in the nineteen ninety's? I try to dig out a tie every couple of weeks. It's a brand new tie. I think we are finished transitioning, and we are ready for a public hearing on the urban renewal plan area. And I don't know who from staff is going to, Ms. Byington is going to lead us off, so welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of commission. The city contracted with City Architecture of Cleveland, Ohio, to complete a slum and blight study and an associated urban renewal plan for the portion, a portion of downtown. As you are aware, the city previously undertook the same initiative for creation of the bayfront urban revitalization plan area, which includes properties mostly north of Shoreline Drive, west of Jackson Street Pier, to and through the transient marina. A slum and blight study must be completed prior to adopting an urban renewal plan area. Through Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 725, the establishment of an urban renewal plan area allows for the use of tax increment fund revenues to be utilized for projects provided within the plan area, such as infrastructure, economic development initiatives, and other public improvements. The purpose of creating the second urban renewal area is to allow for the existing TIF revenue generated through the Chesapeake Loft Project to be eligible for future projects in the second urban renewal plan area. The city is working to continue the momentum of the recent investments in down, into downtown, and believes that establishment of this plan area, which will allow for public investment, will continue to spur private development. By utilizing TIF dollars within the two designated urban renewal areas, existing city funds will be available for other areas of the city. Tonight, we have, from City Architecture, Alex Pesta and Krista Sarcek, who are going to explain the process of the study, how they completed it, some of the metrics, how the boundary was selected, and then the results of the actual study, and then the objectives and recommendations within the urban renewal plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Good evening, everyone.
Welcome back.
It's a pleasure to be back. It's always interesting to see, and believe me, I lurk on the Register website to see what you guys are up to, and you guys are very busy. It's always, it's always good to see kind of what gets put into motion in a community after the adoption of a master plan. And what I can tell you is that some of the, you know, specifically, the, the topic that we're going to spend some time with tonight, it might not be overly exciting, it might not be as visionary as the last time we were in this room presenting the, the bicentennial plan. However, I will say that it is equally as important as some of those visions that were outlined and that the community identified. A slum and blight study sounds a lot worse than it is. What it does, and Angie summed it up perfectly, is that it opens up potential funding sources and reallocations. So, this is a piece of, piece of legislature that really is becoming and will serve as one of the first implementation steps of the plan. So, if you recall, when we were here presenting the overall master plan, we said that there would need to be some policy updates and some legislation that would be passed. This is, in fact, one of those things that can help materialize that master plan and the vision that are, that's, that's outlined as such. Before we jump into it, into our process and kind of what the results are, I want to reiterate some of the things that this is not, okay? This is not an eminent domain plan. This is not a, a tool to, to, to take property from folks. This is not a black eye on the city as far as admitting that you have slum and blight, recognizing that it is. This is simply a term that is used, again, to open up funding sources, and it is not a judgment of those properties or the property owners of those individual parcels. This is just a, very much a, a conditions analysis, the metrics, the outline that we wanted to create so it was as fair as we possibly could be. There is very little subjectivity as far as the property analysis and metrics as far as when we scored. So, I wanted to outline that, just in case there are any questions about what this is, because I will say that slum and blight, it sounds a lot worse than it is. So, before we, let me jump into our, our boundary, may look a little odd on the screen. What I can tell you is that that is a function of, is resource, frankly speaking. If we could look at every single parcel downtown, I think that that's something that the city would entertain. However, resources are finite, so we had to be careful and very targeted and specific about which properties we looked at. Part of that was in, part of that was related to the conditions of some of the existing properties, really wanting to understand and allocate. What I will share with you and what we'll get into with some of the, the metrics of really what was underlying is that what we discovered through our analysis and some of the reports and, and information that was distilled to us, is that a lot of the blight, a lot of the, a lot of the blight is, is tied to public infrastructure. So, yes, there's private property that's part of the analysis, however, the conditions of the utilities that are under the road, it's all dated. We understand that the water and sewer, sewer lines are original to the city, so we're looking at a hundred-year-old infrastructure that's underground. You guys know the pavement conditions better than we do, but the city engineer did provide us with the pavement conditions analysis, so that all weighed into this. And the public space, I think, was as much of a contributing factor as the public, or as the private properties that were there. So, we looked at, at the outline, the study that's in red, part of that was driven by the first urban renewal plan as far as the Chesapeake. We had to make sure that we went up and we connected to Jackson Street Pier for the adjacency to essentially continue and extend the, the slum and blight area and then eventually the urban renewal plan. So, you can see the area, it's about fifty acres in total, fifty-five acres in total, of which almost half, twenty-four acres of that is that public right-of-way. So, you can kind of see what the breakdown is. Of the thirty acres that is privately held, about half of it is what we would consider vacant, and vacant doesn't mean that there isn't a use there, but vacant means that there isn't a building, okay? So, that was also part of the contributing factor as far as determining the definitions for slum and blight, which are outlined and given to us by the Ohio Revised Code. So, there was not, we did not make up a definition for what that could be. What we did is we, we, we came up with a scoring criteria to look at each one of those. So, our scoring criteria, we did what we would, what we call a windshield analysis, so we did not enter any of the properties, we did not go on the private property, this was all what we could see from the streets, from the sidewalks, and you can see, we, we created a five-point rating system, and if you've reviewed the document, there's also a zero that's shown in the table in the document. The zero means not applicable. So, if there was, for instance, when we get into the parcel by parcel, but if there was something that was in our scoring criteria that was not present on that parcel, it got a score zero, because we didn't want to artificially kind of skew what the results would be, because this was all based on a point system. So, one would be excellent, five would be dangerous, and you can kind of see the sliding scale between that. And I'm going to give some specific examples. So, five would be dangerous or nonexistent but needed, and we'll get into some, some things there. So, that, that line, that cutoff, you can see, if it was designated as a four or a five, and we're going to get into the categories, the property earned a point in that, in that category. And then the more points that it had, when it got to four points, it was considered slum. And then when you have enough slum, then you have blight, which is a little odd to say with a smile, but that's, that's really what the process is. And you can see how we went through windows, siding, masonry, driveways, fencing conditions, if there was standing water on the properties, things that you would kind of, I think, associate with properties that could be in various stages of disrepair or elements of that could be in disrepair. This is fully outlined in the report. Here's some examples of what we saw. So, top left is clearly a vacant parcel that's downtown, that's not the highest investment land use, that's certainly scored as a slum. The property that's on the top right, there are, and what, when the next couple of slides are shown, there are some, what, again, were considered vacant properties, building, or properties without a building on it, by the Mack Iron Building, they're very well-kept. So, they're not considered slum because of the vacancy. That is a contributing factor, but in those particular cases, because they are so well-kept, it was not classified as such. But properties that had a lot of pavement, like in the bottom left and even on the bottom right, which is a heaved sidewalk, you can see that that is certainly a condition that needs to be remediated and therefore was classified as such. If we saw large masonry cracks, rusted utilities on the top right, peeling or missing siding, on the bottom right, upper stores, our, upper stories of downtown businesses that are vacant, we needed to quantify that. And really, what was tough, and what we did, I think that the report does a good job of, is delineating where there is vacancy that's present, and we determined that if there was a portion of a property that was vacant, then it needed to be scored as such, as a vacant, or that needed to be, be considered in the overall scoring. Because a ground floor use that we learned through the visioning process with the bicentennial plan, a ground floor use in downtown Sandusky wasn't good enough, per the charge of the residents and part of the, and the stakeholders that participated, we want to see those eventually, we want to see those upper floors be occupied, renovated and occupied. So, again, this is a way that those individual properties in those areas could qualify for potential funding sources. We found a lot of good. Like I said, the bottom left picture, it's not maybe the highest and best land use for downtown property, but it is very well-kept. Some of the residential properties that are in the study area, very well-kept, and then obviously, some of the downtown businesses and buildings that are there. If we didn't see an eyesore, if we didn't see something that posed a, a public safety hazard, it did not get scored as, as a slum or blighted property. So, in the report, we went through, there were a hundred and twenty-five individual parcels that we scored, so our process was, we literally walked up and down, we had tablets, and we scored each one of those criteria. We had tablets, and we scored each one of those criteria. And you can see, these are two kind of opposing sheets. You can see the one on the left was, in fact, designated as blighted due to the condition and the fact that it is vacant. The one on the right is not blighted. And you can see the designation, it's about a third of the way down the page. And then you can see overall windows, roof, siding, you can kind of see those score categories. And again, if there were more than, if there were four or more of the fours or fives that we saw there, then it became a blighted property. So that was really, it really came down to a mathematical equation as far as how we could designate what the properties were. And again, we tried to, the best we could, we tried to eliminate any sort of subjectivity to it. That being said, there is a caveat, is that we are human, and we are relying on our, what we can see and really what we can record. So for instance, if we look at specific things like a roof, you know, some of the flat roof buildings, again, we did not gain entry, we did not gain access, so we couldn't put eyes on that. If it was a sloped roof or a gabled roof that we could see and was in really poor condition, then it was, it was blighted. It was, it was, it was scored as such. I reviewed like some of those metrics and specifically with the roofs, because it's kind of hard to make sure that we see everybody and we score them equally. There were only three of the, of all the properties that we saw that were classified as poor condition. So there was only three points that were associated with a roof specifically. Everything else, I would say, is, is pretty well in open sight from what we can see and what we can tell. The analysis, what we were able to kind of map and we were able to distill was what you can see here, so occupancy and vacancy. Red is that it is vacant with a building. Green is open land. And then the ochre color, the, the, kind of the orange color is an occupied building. So you can see that there isn't a tremendous amount of vacant buildings that are here, but there is some open land specifically on the eastern side of the property, which again, doesn't necessarily mean that it's slum or blighted. But when we get and we kind of shift gears and talk about the urban renewal plan, that's where really we can take the data and start to make recommendations specific to land use. And as outlined in the bicentennial plan, one of the options or one of the considerations for this property was not to retain the open land and, and the industrial use that's there for long-term visioning purposes. So what I can tell you is from a good news, from a vacancy and building standpoint, there isn't a tremendous amount in the study area. The curb condition, this was information that was given to us by Mr. Klein and the engineering department through studies that were done. You can see most of it is in good condition. There's some that is in really bad condition, and there's, and the yellow is in fair. This didn't play a huge role as far as determining what the properties, what the analysis was, but it was a factor as far as what we looked at. The roadway pavement condition did play a factor. If you've driven on the roads, I'm sure that you have experienced it in real time, that the pavement conditions are strained, I guess is the best way to put it here. And with the exception of a, a couple of blocks that have been recently repaved or reconstructed. And I want to kind of pause for a second and, and call attention to the pavement condition, that it is something that we need to address, and it, and the importance of having it to help guide where some of the blocks are that could be blighted, is that once the pavement gets past a certain point, kind of a point of no return, the cost, the cost escalation that's associated with repair and replacement can get into 300% to 400%, what it would be to kind of fix it or catch it before it gets to that point. So this really does help prioritize where some of those blocks are, and ultimately where some of that funding, where some of that TIF funding can be redirected or allocated to catch roads before they get to a point where you're looking at a full reconstruction rather than perhaps a mill and fill. So the pavement condition was part of it. These were, again, the four, more of the four points that were here. Any condition of the, of the building or the site is a four or five, that got a point. The building or the land is classified as vacant, it got a point. If the taxes owed, we looked at the, the county auditor site with the information over there. If the taxes owed were greater than the total property value, it got a point. I believe there was only one property that that was the case in the area. So the taxes, there are some delinquencies, but there aren't a really longstanding delinquencies. The total property value less than the county median, I would tell you that most of the properties that we looked at actually fall into that category. That's a pretty high median number, so a lot of the properties qualified for that point. When we look at those top four, those are really ones that fell on the private side. The bottom three sidewalks, the shoulders or the edge of the roadway and the curb, and then of course, the roadway pavement condition, that was all in the public right-of-way. So those almost became a commodity as part of this study, because it became, they were very consistent throughout the entire area. If we go back to those maps, you can see that it's, it's very, it's very rare that it would change block by block. So when we look at this, you can see the blighted condition. So the red is what we would consider blight, based on the scoring and the analysis. You can see that it's, it's really concentrated to a few blocks, primarily related to vacancy and conditions that we witnessed. And you can see there, the Mack Iron, the block that's kind of in the middle, top right, between Market and Water, that's that area that was, that's that open space that was not designated as blight. So just because there isn't a building and just because it's vacant, per the definition, they did not classify it or necessarily mean that, that it was blight. So the Ohio Revised Code, Section 725, leaves a little bit of area for interpretation as far as what does designates a slum, or I'm sorry, what designates blight. So the individual property is slum, and then the, the, the total would be considered blight. The code reads that if there is substantial slum, then you can take the blight designation. There isn't a specific percentage that's given. It doesn't say majority. The language is very specific when it says substantial. So what this retain, or what this adds up to is about 34%. So a third of the property is by definition and by kind of the findings of the report as slum. So we believe that you can take the blighted designation for the, for the outlined area. And this does, in fact, open it up for the extension of the TIF funds that are part of the Chesapeake. So again, that's not a bad thing. Anytime we can talk about new or redirected funding sources, I think that that helps kind of core urban communities. So as we transition now, now that we know that we have slum and now that we know that we have blight, the second kind of piece to this analysis or piece to this planning process is an urban renewal plan. So the urban renewal plan takes that information and develops a land use, specific public improvements, circulation and connection, economic impact in the visual environment. These are outlined by, again, the Ohio Revised Code and case studies that we looked at. And here's the, here's where I think that, that Sandusky is really ahead of the curve, is that many of these categories have been already addressed through the bicentennial plan. So we did not need to go back and replan. What we needed to do is make sure that the urban renewal plan outlined ways in which that vision could be achieved. So when we look at the urban renewal, or the, I'm sorry, the bicentennial plan, you can see that, that many of the areas that we collectively looked at were in these blocks, were in these areas. The existing land use plan is a little erratic. It's a little bit of a patchwork quilt in downtown. The red is commercial, gray is parking. We could have a whole conversation on parking, it's probably not appropriate right now. Blue is industrial, purple is institutional, yellow is residential, and the ochre, the orange, which I don't think that there is, oh, there is one parcel on the map that's there as well. So what you can see is that it's a little desperate. There's, there's uses that are next to each other that aren't necessarily appropriate, I think is the best way to, to describe it. It does not necessarily mean that it's a bad thing. I think that a mixed-use downtown district certainly thrives, but there's, if we're talking about legislation, if we're talking about ways to really ensure that the, the vision plan can be achieved, this can be cleaned up, and, and kind of guidelines or, or a framework can better be defined by this. So the existing zoning is, is kind of similar. If I switch back and forth, you can kind of see it's a little bit, little bit more defined as far as the downtown business, which is the, the light blue color, but you see industry, two-family, single-family, and some other uses that are in too. So not necessarily a bad thing, but to clean up and make sure that, again, it is consistent with the work that has done, been completed prior to. Our recommendation for the proposed zoning would be to basically keep everything west that is in the blue, the light blue, so that's the downtown business. And then rezone properties closer to, basically between Water and Market to what's called residential business, and then the orange color as residential, two-family residential. So if you aren't aware, I'm going to kind of go through zoning kind of 101. You guys have a cumulative zoning code right now. So what that means, that if you come down for the, for the brown, for instance, so residential retail uses allow for a small-scale retail or home office. And then kind of if you move up the zoning code, two-family residential, single-family residential, those are all allowed because those are less, or those are more stringent than the residential retail. So that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be retail, but what it does is it kind of puts a limit per year zoning code as the scale of retail that can be here. It's much more, like I said, it's much more home office, maybe some small, kind of a corner shop, but it doesn't get, and it wouldn't allow anything more than that. Where the orange is, that would be all residential. So as, as you kind of think, as you move south through the neighborhood, towards Washington, it transitions very quickly into a residential neighborhood. We thought that it was important to keep that frontage along Washington, with the exception of the two kind of arms that reach down. And that's a function primarily of that those are large parcels, that we didn't want to start talking about splitting parcels and doing a split zoning analysis that was here, a recommendation that was here. So again, the, the plan outlines land use. I don't, if you want me to go through all these, I certainly can, but the, the kind of the five, the tenants of the, of the, the plan are land use. What I can tell you is that it's consistent, the, the recommendations in this document are absolutely consistent with the bicentennial plan. Same with public improvements, so that could be infrastructure, parks, sidewalks, roadways, you know, specific areas that were identified, circulation and connection, that's the notion of bicycle connections, multimodal trails. Again, this doesn't lay out specifically where these things occur, but it, it brings mention of it and it ties it into this as a fundable piece of this document moving forward. So if that TIF funding were to be reallocated, these would now be eligible for that funding. Economic development, that was a huge piece of the bicentennial plan to bring new businesses, jobs, opportunities into the city. This would certainly not get in the way of that. And then visual environment or aesthetics, what it looks like, gateways, intersections, landscape areas, blight elimination or removal could also be a part of this, if the partnership, I think, felt right. Again, I want to reiterate that this does not propose eminent domain or the taking of property in any way. And then lastly, the plan, the urban renewal plan also outlines if there were to be a property acquisition or if there would be a property partnership with the city, and, you know, kind of the structure of what that would look like, and then ultimately what the review process would be for proposals coming forward, i.e., make sure that it comes in front of the planning commission, so your planning commission gets an opportunity to review a plan, and then ultimately comes to the city commission to make sure that you guys have your stamp of approval on it, so that there isn't a way that a development could be put together in a layout that could be put together that would not be thoroughly vetted and reviewed, kind of again, in line with the work and the outlines that have been done to date. So that is, that concludes my piece. I know that there's a lot of words. Last time we were here, we had a lot of pictures. But sometimes in order to, to get to the pictures, we need to make sure that we have the law and the legislation that's there to support it and to allow it. So I'm, I'm sure that there's questions. If there's any clarifications that I can make, please let me know. I will do my best to recall the 125 parcels, but I might have to pull out the appendix and look at some of them.
Thank you, Mr. Pesta. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Brady.
Sir, the, the ultimate goal of this entire study, though, encapsulated into one very small phrase, is to give us the ability to take the Chesapeake TIF and spread it over more properties.
That's it.
That be correct?
That's it.
So, so it's a terrific economic goal that may allow us to lift more boats downtown.
Yes.
In terms of buildings.
That's absolutely it. You want to try to free up, if there is funding that's there, if there's resources that are there, this is a way, exactly what you said.
It could not be more.
Commissioner, just spread it out.
That concept and that idea.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
Welcome back, Mr. Pesta.
Thank you.
Once again, great presentation. It was very informative. I have to agree with you, it is equally as important as our comprehensive plan, so we can make that happen. And I just wanted to commend the staff for continuing to be resourceful and finding ways to make our comprehensive plan possible.
Further questions or comments? This is a public hearing, so anyone present wishing to speak on the issue, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts, if anyone here is so inclined. And seeing no one moving toward the microphone, unless the commissioners have any further comments, this hearing is closed. Thank you, Ms. Pesta.
Thank you.
Okay, we will take up that legislation in just a little bit, but for now, I would appreciate a motion to accept the communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation for our consideration.
Second.
And a motion, second. Discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing, no objection, the motion is approved. Ms. Cresser, would you present item number one, please, which is on a second reading tonight?
Yes, item number one is an ordinance amending Part 9 Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code, Title III Utilities, Chapter 933 Sewer Regulations and Rates, Section 933.25, Rates of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Sandusky in the Manner and Way Specifically Set Forth Here and Below.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the second reading.
Second.
And a motion, second. Discussion? Ms. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted on second reading. Item number two, please.
Item two is also, yes, second reading. An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase bulk highway de-icing rock salt for the Division of Traffic Services to be used in the calendar year 2017 from Detroit Salt Company, LLC of Detroit, Michigan.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole?
Move for the adoption of this ordinance under second reading.
Second.
And a motion, second. Discussion? Ms. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item three is a resolution approving the Erie County Solid Waste Management District Plan Update and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of rules in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
And a motion, and second. Discussion? Well, I know we have to do this, but I guess it's not all that exciting to all of us tonight. So we've reviewed, reviewed all the materials that presented. I see Ms. Berstein here. Is there anything that you would like to, to say before we consider this legislation?
Just that we, we retire the largest in this county for the approval of the solid waste plan as everywhere here. There are no huge changes from last year, or from five years ago till now, other than the service provider agreements, which you guys are already doing in the city. And we're hoping to do more education and outreach, more business and industry, and reach out to people who are recycling animals as well.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for preparing this, for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, further comments? Ms. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady? Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number ten, please.
Item six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first change order for work to be performed by Underground Utilities Incorporated of Monroeville, Ohio for the East End Sewer Improvements Project in the amount of $44,951.90 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first change order for work to be performed by Underground Utilities Incorporated of Monroeville, Ohio for the East End Sewer Improvements Project in the amount of $44,951.90 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion. Well, I know we have to do this, but I guess it's not all that exciting to all of us tonight. So we've reviewed all the materials that were presented. I see Ms. Berstein here. Is there anything that you would like to say before we consider this legislation?
Just that we retire the largest in this county for the approval of the solid waste management hardware here. There are no huge changes from last year or from five years ago till now, other than the service provider agreements, which you guys are already doing in the city. And we're hoping to do more education and outreach, more business and industry, and we'll change up to make the recycling avenues as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for preparing this, for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, further comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the first change order for work to be performed by Underground Utilities Incorporated of Monroeville, Ohio for the East End Sewer Improvements Project in the amount of $44,951.90 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I'd ask Mr. Klein to give us a brief overview of what we're doing here. And I know it seems almost insignificant, but it really turns out to be a terrific savings on almost, on many projects that we undertake in the engineering department.
Ms. Klein.
Through, Mr. President, this is a program that's very similar, if not identical, to the state cooperative purchasing program. We had looked at redoing the roofs at the wastewater treatment plant like we did at the Big Island Water Plant a year ago. Well, the roofs are no longer part of the state cooperative purchasing, so we would have had to have hired a consultant to do a design process and go through that whole program for something that we didn't feel was necessary to have an architect or a consultant onboard. So by entering this program, we can then purchase similar to the state cooperative purchasing program. They do all the bidding for us beforehand. We can then enter into an agreement to purchase and have the installation of the roofs and repair of the roofs completed by saving that architectural cost as well. So this is something that hopefully in the future, we can join both of the programs at the same time every year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Thank you for bringing that to the city's attention. Questions or comments, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number eight, please.
Item eight is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Buckeye Energy Brokers Incorporated of Akron, Ohio for opt-out electric aggregation services and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine. Ah, Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in accordance with Section 13 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Which one are you this time?
I would just ask Mr. Soloway to give us just an overview of what this does for us.
Mr. Soloway?
This is probably another example of us trying to be a little bit proactive on electric. So the city of Sandusky is part of an aggregation program, which automatically the customers save 6% on the price to compare on the utility bills for electricity. We've notified that that discount will expire in April of 2018, so what we are looking to do is to enter an agreement with Buckeye Energy Brokers to help us start planning for that transition of looking for a possible provider, help us with the marketing and outreach, the customer service part of it. Actually, Tom Belish, who is president of Buckeye Energy Brokers, is here tonight. He's going to speak to it a little bit more, just in commission, if that's okay. He was going to kind of give a brief overview.
That would be perfectly fine, sir. If you'd step to the microphone, please.
Okay. Good evening. In 2000, the city put on the ballot to do electric aggregation, so it's been, the program's been around quite a while. What we like to do is send out requests for proposal to the various suppliers and once we get those and review those, make a recommendation. And so we would be doing that this next calendar year and looking for the best offer to the residents. And we are required to send out notices to everybody in the program, as well as those eligible. Those with another supplier would not automatically be included. They would have to opt in if they wanted, if they wanted to join. So basically, just the current customers and eligible customers with Ohio Edison are eligible to be automatically included. So we'll get letters out to everyone there. So the pricing next time might be a little different. You have the 6% discount, but what we'd like to see is something similar, or it might be a fixed price. We're not sure, so we'll look into those details and report back to the administration.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Belish. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Does that, that program applies not just to residential, but it applies to light commercial also?
Yeah, yes, it does. So the commercial is limited to about 700,000 kilowatt hours a year, so it is residential and small commercial. Right now, it's a 4% discount, I believe, to the commercial.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
So I see that there's no direct cost. Do you get reimbursed after the service provider is selected?
So...
And you reimburse through them?
Yes, so there's no charge to the city for the program. We are paid by the selected supplier, and that's how we're, we work with them.
Just to put it out of touch with the electric prices, we have to price that out almost a year in advance, so we would be looking at probably lock-in prices in May of 2017. So I know 2018 seems like it's far away, but that's sort of why we want to do the volume so we can be ready to go to market, get a price, and report back.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, Chris.
Can I also add that I've worked with Mr. Belish for, through our gas aggregation program for a number of years. I can't remember when you started doing that, but Buckeye and Mr. Belish himself are very responsive to citizens and requests when I get them, because I usually get those calls and they're very good to work with, so.
Good to know. Thank you. Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please? Ms. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number nine, please.
Item nine is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager and/or finance director to make payment to the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services for the city's contribution to the transitional reinsurance program for 2016, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Soloway, could you take a minute and explain this to us, please?
Well, maybe the easiest way to answer this is since we have sort of transitioned from being part of a health insurance pool to being self-insured on our own, now we're responsible for some of the different Affordable Care Act fees we have to pay. And unfortunately, this is one, since we did transition in January 1st of 2016, that is a fee that we are required to pay.
Okay.
It's set by law as far as what the fee is, and there's a method to go about calculating it, which I believe was attached to the communication. We also had Ashley Group, who was our consultant with the health insurance program, review the information to make sure we're covering it correctly. It's really about it. It's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Ms. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 10, please.
Item 10 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Genata and Herner of Monroeville, Ohio, for the Amtrak Depot Floor and Foundation Rehabilitation Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Anderson told us when he was in front of us last that this would be coming our way, and here it is. Mr. Anderson, anything that you would like to add before the commission takes this up?
No, Mr. President. It's exactly as we put out to bid a couple of weeks ago. It's actually below what the engineer's estimate was as well.
Good.
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
Mr. Anderson, there was an alternate that was going to do another section of this, but we're not accepting that alternate. We're just doing the basic, the base bid.
That is correct. What we're doing is the southern portion of the building, not the northern portion of the building. We're starting to see signs of decay in the southern, in the northern portion of the facility as well, but nowhere near as degraded as the southern portion. What we're hoping to do is to actually resolve that issue by fixing the drainage issue in 2017, so we don't have any more decay.
Further questions or comments, commissioners? Ms. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance, please.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. That concludes our regular items of business, and we turn the floor over now to Mr. Webster for his city manager's report.
Good evening, commissioners. Stuart asked me to give my manager's report from the podium today. He said it would make me look taller. So I'm excited to do that. For my first order of business, I am honored to introduce to you tonight Leslie Messenberg, who's my new executive assistant. Leslie, if you could stand. This is her first commission meeting. She joined us recently from Firelands Regional Medical Center, and she's off to a great start. We're really excited to have her in the office. So no donations tonight. Chief Orzak must be having a slow few weeks. I'm sure we'll have like 300 next time. But moving on to new and old business, starting with the police. Officers have been and will continue to participate in a number of Halloween activities this month. Activities include passing out candy, Halloween trick-or-treat bags, and attending events. My own two boys have benefited greatly in, like their ghosts, trick-or-treat bags, so I thank you for that very much. Also, documents were submitted to the Ohio Collaborative Law Enforcement Agency application process on May 13th. This initiative implements statewide policies on use of force, deadly force, and hiring, recruiting. This process will take several months to complete. We have until March 2017 to comply with this voluntary process. A list of compliance agencies will be completed in March of 2017. On October 19th, we received notification that we have been provisionally approved to be in compliance with the policies for the Ohio Collaborative. The review of the policies and all supporting documents have been reviewed by the state. The final step is an onsite visit, which will take place within the next two months. A thank you to Lieutenant Campbell and Sergeant Snyder for spearheading this effort to ensure compliance with the voluntary process. Moving on to the fire department. In a collaborative effort with Cedar Point, the Sandusky Fire Department participated in a three-day training scenario that simulated a victim rescue and removal from the skyride using our newly purchased tower ladder truck. I'm sure that there's some good pictures of that, hopefully. The Sandusky Fire, I've often worried about needing to be rescued while on the sky cars in Cedar Point. The Sandusky Fire Department, not because of any reason other than in my own mind, but the Sandusky Fire Department participated in trick-or-treat at Cedar Point as well, giving candy out to over 5,000 children. It was truly a great night, and Chief Dagden wants to thank Cedar Point for letting them share in such a great event, and to the citizens for bringing children to the event. The Sandusky Fire Department is teaming up at the Volunteer Center of Erie County for a food drive. The fire department will be collecting a non-perishable food item for Erie County families in need, November 1st through December 3rd. Items can be dropped off at the main station at 600 West Market Street, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Again, that's November 1st through December 3rd at 600 West Market Street, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Moving on to finance. As reposted last month, the city will receive the Auditor of State Award for the 2015 year. The Auditor of State Award is presented to local governments upon completion of a financial audit that are in compliance with numerous accounting and auditing requirements. Less than 5% of public entities receive this award each year. Ann Spence will be presenting the award to the city commission at the November 14th, 2016 meeting. And as was stated at our finance committee meeting late last week, it's become so commonplace that we've received this award that we're beginning to take it for granted, but that 5% number, fewer than 5% receiving it tells us we shouldn't take it for granted, and that's real testament to the strong accounting and financial management we're getting from Director Soloway. So I commend him for that. Moving on to the Public Works Department. The contractor for the East End Sewer Project will be mobilizing in November back to Cleveland Road to address signal loops and making a final sewer connection at Remington Avenue. Milling and surfacing will begin this week on Fifth Street. The city is developing a scope of services with ritual and engineering to design a complete reconstruction of Gartland Avenue from Monroe to the North End, including utilities, sidewalks, tree replacement, curb and gutter. And having recently attended a community meeting on the west side, that will be very welcome news to the residents of Gartland Avenue. I know that they're very excited about those improvements, and we know it's very necessary on that street. Staff was successful in securing a WS RLA funding approval for 0% financing from the Ohio EPA for the PAC project at B., Big Island Water Works. It's a lot of acronyms for one line. Community development, the city is now the legally titled owner to the former Sunoco Gas Station located at 1651 Tiffin Avenue as of October 20th. Site remediation and tank removal activities should be commencing in the next few weeks, and I know a lot of commissioners and others have been anxiously awaiting removing that blight from the community. So I thank everybody who is involved in the acquisition and securing of funding for that project. Initial meetings and a steering committee meeting for the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative had been conducted or scheduled. I want to thank several commissioners who attended yesterday's meeting at St. Paul's Church on Mill Street. We also had a steering committee meet on October 19th at Cameo Pizza. Thanks to all those who attended that. Upcoming meetings include a meeting on October 27th at 5:00 p.m. at 1016 Third Street, a meeting on October 27th at 5:00 p.m., or sorry, I think that one's at 7:00 p.m. Is that correct? At Damon's for the Cove District. The first meeting is for the First through Fifth Street neighborhoods. The south of Kilborn area will meet November 2nd at 5:00 p.m. at the Nehemiah Center. The Garden District will meet November 2nd at 7:00 p.m. at the Firelands Regional Medical Center Cafeteria. And the west side meeting will take place November 3rd at 7:00 p.m. at Margaritaville. My guess is we may get better attendance at the Margaritaville meeting than some of the others, myself included. Moving on to public services and recreation, we need a motion to sell rock salt to the Sandusky City Schools Maintenance Department. I guess I have a request to ask for a motion to sell rock salt to the Sandusky Schools Department. And at 4924 per acre, that's the 2016 price, I want to thank Commissioner Brady for making the connection with the schools.
There's been a motion and second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
This is not, this is not unique. We did this, I believe we did this last year also, and the schools do not use a lot of salt, but I think it's good public relations, and I think it's a good way for us to partner with our school system.
Thank you for your leadership on that. Did you guys vote?
Not yet.
Okay, sorry.
Further comments?
Sorry, I got ahead of myself.
It's a formality.
Yeah, yeah.
We want to vote once and for all. Without objection, the motion be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Thank you. I apologize for the procedural snafu.
That's okay.
Bathrooms will begin to close for the 2016 season. We will keep Jackson Street and Shoreline Park functional for as long as the weather allows. I know that Director Link and Commissioner Waddington have been working closely together at looking at how we maintain restroom facilities in the downtown area, and I believe Director Link has secured two porta-potties for the Sandusky Bay Pavilion and Jackson Street Pier sites that'll keep us open there all winter with handicap access. I can say that we heard from a lot of members of the community and that without Commissioner Waddington's leadership pushing that forward, it would not have happened. Yeah, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Waddington.
So if you want your car washed, it's not going to have them walking at night, down? We get a lot of complaints about people urinating behind trees, on buildings, and we heard that a lot, correct, Mr. Brady? That's right. A lot of people at the coffee meetings and phone calls. It's another good thing, we want people, we got the pathway there to use it to walk in the winter. Why do we shut down on, you know, November 1st? So this is good to encourage people to get out and walk, walk your dog, or if you're downtown. I'm sure Mrs. Lloyd, I believe I had a brief conversation with her, they're going in restaurants, use the bathrooms and that, so that's what drove a lot of this.
We agree completely and are thankful for you pushing that forward. You know, even in the presentation on Duluth tonight, you heard that, you know, a lot of cold weather cities make a really intentional effort to be welcoming and active during the winter. This is a step in the direction, and thank you for making that possible. Speaking of the transition to winter, the leaf season collection schedule and pickup zones and dates are as follows. Zone 5, which is south of the railroad, east of Camp Street to the city limits, that'll take place on October 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th, and 28th, as well as the week of December 5th through the 8th. So if you want your leaves picked up, make sure that they're raked to the curb for those two weeks. In addition to that, Zone 1, which is east of Meg Street and Sycamore Line to the city limits, including the Shaw Say, that'll take place from October 31st through November 4th, as well as on December 9th, 12th, and 13th. Zone 2, which is west of Meg Street and Sycamore Line to Columbus Avenue, from Water Street to the railroad tracks, on November 7th through the 10th, as well as December 14th through the 16th. Zone 3, November 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 28th, and the 29th, as well as December 19th and 20th, and Zone 3 is west of Columbus Avenue to Camp Street from Sandusky Bay to the railroad tracks. And again, Zone 3 is November 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 28th, and 29th, as well as December 19th and 20th. And then finally, Zone 4, which is west of Camp Street, including the Venice area, which will take place on November 30th and December 1st and 2nd, as well as December 21st and 22nd. So, and again, you can find those on our website, but we look forward to another successful leaf season. Property maintenance, we'll have a part-time position available. Anyone with experience in construction and grounds maintenance, please apply. Again, you can find that on our website, and that's an open part-time position in our property maintenance division. We'd also like to welcome Chris Henry to our traffic service department as a maintenance electrician, and Mike Ross to our fleet maintenance division. They'll both start on November 7th. And finally, we'd like to welcome James Walden to our traffic services street division as a maintenance 2. James has been with the city for over a year as a part-time employee and is a welcomed addition to our full-time staff. That concludes my remarks for this evening.
Commissioners, have any questions for the city manager or comments? Thank you, Mr. Webster. Otherwise, we'll turn to items of old business. Anyone having any items of old business? Anyone having any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
Recently, let me say it like this. There's an epidemic that's stretched out into our community, and it's opiate use. There's been a significant number of drug overdoses in our city and in our county and our community, and I think there needs to be something done about it. And I'd be interested to create a coalition, and that coalition would connect the resources that we have in our community so that people know about the recovery sources and connecting, basically connecting law enforcement, religious services, and all interested parties. During the time that I spent with our fire department, and I'm sure the chief could attest, I learned that we have multiple overdoses, sometimes I think maybe 100 overdoses in one month just in our city, if I'm correct, chief. I don't want to...
I don't want to, that was right in front of me.
Right, right, right. And sometimes double and triple overdoses. We get to the scene, and I believe we need to go out and be more proactive about it. Instead of waiting until, you know, we find these people overdosed, we need to identify them and get them to the help, and help their families get them to help. You know, it's a significant cost. If you don't even care about the people, you should at least care about the significant burden that it's putting on the city. You know, we're expanding a lot of services through our police and fire and social services to take care of these people, and it's about time that we do something. You know, it's been said that the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago, and the second best time is now. And I think now is the time that we need to do something about this, and I was discussing it earlier with the city manager and our fire chief, and hopefully everyone else that's interested in this room, that we do something to put together a coalition that takes care of this matter. And so, and Eric, I don't know if you want to contribute to that, but this is the point that I want moving forward.
Sure. Through the commission president to Commissioner Lockhart, we did have a chance to speak about that today, and I found Commissioner Lockhart to be very knowledgeable and passionate about the subject. I've been talking to Chief Dagden about that interest as well over the last few days, and with that in mind, I reached out to Pete Shade, who's the director of the Erie County Sandusky Health Department, and he was very excited to hear of our interest and offered to sit down with us and anyone who's interested from the city to talk a little bit about what they're doing and how Greg's, or Commissioner Lockhart's interests can align with that work and potentially help us fill some of the gaps in that service chain. So, you know, we're excited about this. We know it's a huge issue. I hear about it from Chief Orzak. I hear about it from Chief Dagden. We hear about it, you know, too often from people who have family members suffering from this challenge, and we'll do what we can and work with Director Lockhart, starting with that, or Commissioner Lockhart, starting with that meeting with Director Shade and going from there.
Good to hear, Mr. Lockhart, and Mr. Webster.
I'm Mr. Lockhart.
Yeah.
Sort of. But I don't know if the fire chief or police chief may have anything to add to that. And by that, I mean, you know, what you've experienced, statistics, things that you hear about. I know that looking, when I was in the police department, I was amazed at the, there's a board or graph where you see some of the activities and overdoses and things like that. You know, these are the things that we need to bring to light and let people know in our community, so we can get people interested and get into that. If you could just give a little bit on that.
I don't want to speak for the police chief, but I'm sure that we both see the same people when we go into their houses, or we find them in cars outside of gas stations, restaurants. It definitely is an epidemic. We've known that for the past couple of years. The incidence of overdoses have just exploded. It's almost amazing how they've exploded, and so we do definitely need to do something about it, because to help these people out, one way or another, they're either through, they're not getting diagnosed correctly so they can get into the right help, or they're just refusing treatment. But there are various ways of helping them, and I think it's definitely worth taking a look at in the fire department, yes, and I'm sure the police department, too. Instead of going to these overdoses that we don't, shouldn't be, that we weren't going to before, that's taxing everybody, and it also taxes the rest of the citizens as well. So we're in full agreement.
So my comments would be that we started with Pat Shenego, who's the county commissioner, and Pete Shade, and organizations, Genesis on the Lake, and all those organizations several years ago, so it's been on our radar. We've had a number of community forums, the chapel one that we had, we had one locally here. Educating folks is the best measure, so I think that there's probably some more education and more bringing it to light that would be, you know, that can be organized, but we do recognize the significant importance, and it only takes being with a grieving mother or father or someone else that, you know, it's very frustrating and challenging. We do have a new House Bill that came out, 110, which limits our ability to arrest individuals that are overdosing if they're calling 911 or someone's calling 911. So there's some tracking mechanisms and things that we're going to have to do in order for that, for us to document these incidents. It went into effect September, I think, 13th or 15th. So, yeah, it's critically important. We need to, and, you know, the detox center that just opened up is another component. And then, in addition to that, the last component, so they have the sobriety living for the women out there, the detox center that just started in construction, and the next component is inpatient care, which is the other local piece that's missing. So I think that'll be coming up to, trying to get that incorporated in the next year or so, but it's very important that all of these entities, the, you know, Joey and Mary Sapina down at Artisans, and Firelands Recovery, and Bay Shore Counseling are all working together in towards the same common goal. So I really understand the, you know, significant importance in what you're trying to do, and we are not going to wrest ourselves out of it, and we don't intend to, and we've been supporting recovery and awareness for a number of years, and we'll continue to do so in any manner we can.
Thank you, chief. I want to thank both of you, and especially Chief Orzak, you've been in this just a little bit longer, I think perhaps, in being at the forefront of law enforcement and making sure that these victims are treated as victims first, and they're not treated as criminals. And I think that you probably largely, you and I haven't discussed this, but I think you probably largely support the intentions behind House Bill 10, because it's the most important thing, is to take care of these families, take care of these people, because that's the right thing to do as a human being. It's also the right thing to do when we take a look at the societal costs, what we want these, I mean, treatment works if you can get people to treatment, and that's what we all want in the end. It's a lot cheaper, it's a lot happier outcome. These people can, who are addicted, can become productive citizens again, and as parents and brothers and sisters and neighbors, that's what we all want to see. So Commissioner Lockhart, hats off to you for trying to advance this issue. There's no way that we can't advance it enough, so, thank you.
Other items of old business? Couple, a couple things. Our new business, excuse me, we're on new business. But I want to mention, Mrs. Cresser is going to take a leave of absence. We need to appoint an acting clerk, and I would appreciate a motion to appoint Paige Doster as the acting clerk until such time as Mrs. Cresser is able to return.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Make a motion that we appoint Paige Doster to...
Second.
To take, to, as temporary clerk while Kelly's on, while Kelly is in absence.
Then a motion and second, discussion? Okay.
I'd like to say I am seriously going to miss Kelly, because Kelly keeps me together on a lot of things here, and so I hope that you, your recovery is very speedy and you get back soon.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Other items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
It occurred to me on a couple of occasions here in the last couple of months, that each time that I go out in the community, whether it's making a presentation at Rotary, which I did last week, or Neighborhood Block Watch, which we did yesterday, that as commissioners, we constantly get questions and concerns, and they're always very meaningful ones. Sat at a table with a group of ladies yesterday from the south side that have been residents here for their entire lives. They are true blue Sanduskins. They are not going anywhere, but like everyone, they have concerns, and they're never going to come down here and attend a commission meeting. And they're sure as heck not going to sit through a couple hours of agenda items to go to that podium and ask us questions.
ourselves available for an hour, just for those residents that maybe can't make a coffee with the commissioners, or, or aren't going to attend a commission meeting. And I think it's, it's not necessarily about transparency, but it's about making ourselves available. And this is, believe me, this is a pilot program. It might last a week, depending on how badly we get beat up. My hope is that it, that it goes on for quite a while, and we'll let you know how we do, and if it's a good experience for the residents, maybe we can talk the rest of it into piling on and, and helping us with that at a different time, Paul.
Thank you for the initiative, both of you. I think it's a good idea, and I'm glad you suggested it. Other items of new business? We are just about upon the election, and there are some important issues, obviously on the ballot, and the presidential election is at the, the very top of the ballot. But I want to take a minute to talk about Issue 12. This is potentially a game changer for the city of Sandusky. Issue 12 would renew or rebuild three school buildings in our community, with the state paying for fully 64% of the cost of construction. We will not again get that opportunity. This is our last chance in all probability to get that higher percentage of funding from the state. It is, it's, it's a year in which the nastiness of the national election is such that it could cause a lot of us to, a lot of us here or listening not to vote, because we just can't bear to pick one of the two candidates. Forget about that for a minute. I don't care if you skip the presidential election altogether. What I want to urge everyone in Sandusky to do is to turn to the back of the ballot and to vote for Issue 12. It has demonstrated that improvements in, in buildings do provide improvements in outcomes. This will align, allow for an alignment of all of the children in a particular grade to be in a single building, so that there can be coordinated instruction to those students, so that they're not cut up in different buildings with different teachers and different plans. That makes a big difference in the end to the educational outcomes. It is, it is really true that great educational facilities provide, really are the rising tide that lifts all boats in the educational sense. The children in our community deserve this. Many of them are in buildings over 100 years old with inadequate heating, obviously no air conditioning at this point in time, which is a severe detractor from, from educational attainment. And I, I think that this is a great bargain for the city. It is something that, it's something that generations before us have done. It is truly our turn, as others have said. I'm just parroting really in this regard what Dr. Sanders has argued for quite some time now. Other generations before us provided the buildings that all of us went to school in, and this is our turn, it's in our opportunity. And I think it'd be a great thing for the city of Sandusky to have new, those new school buildings. So I would urge a yes vote on Issue 12. Other items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cool.
I'd like to echo the sentiments that the chairman just made about Issue 12. This is our opportunity to do something for ourselves. We spent a lot of money over the last two years trying to improve Sandusky from, from this table. Once we get to place the city where we have nice housing, good roads, offer amenities, people moving here to add to the income tax base are going to be looking for good schools. We do need to bring in some younger people that are starting families, and the, this is, is our opportunity to do that. Folks will look very closely at how this vote comes out, in terms of whether or not we're the kind of community they want to meet, move to, that is supporting their schools along with all the infrastructure changes that we're doing. So this is most important. I encourage everyone to get out and vote. There are a lot of folks my age, and I've heard people make comments that, that talk about that perhaps the buildings are not going to make any difference. I would suggest that if you're my age, Sandusky High School was 10 years, 10 years old when we were, when we went there. So for those of us who have benefited from going to new facilities that were continually updated by our parents who always passed levies, we need to recognize that, let's not forget that. We benefited from having excellent facilities. Also additionally, in addition to the two new schools that they're going to put up, or I should say the schools that they're going to deal with for the grade school, additionally, this has an upgrade of the science wing at the, at the high school, which is most important. I'm pretty sure that the, some of the facilities at the high school that they have in that science wing, I'm afraid I might find the biology desk that I sat at in 1967. So it's important to put, put some effort into this. Put some effort into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cool. Mr. Waddington.
I'd like to make a motion for the commission to support this issue. I think it'd be good if we get a voice call.
Second.
Been a motion and second.
Second, third.
I fully support that, Mr. Waddington.
And just imagine the jobs that this can create, too. The schools are great, but the jobs coming in the area and the taxes it generates and the excitement, it's a lot more to it. Lot more to it. A lot of folks working here in the trades and, we really need, we definitely need it. I can attest to that.
There's been a motion and second. For the comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I couldn't agree with all of you more. We need to take care of our children, whether you have children at home or not, they're the, going to be the ones taking care of us in the future. So please vote yes for Issue 12.
Mr. Chairman.
Lockhart.
I also support this issue. I will also, I also have, and I tend to be out walking, knocking on doors to support this issue, and I ask any of you in this room, or anybody listening, to come out with us and knock on doors to get to these people. Today I just said, you know, a lot of people get their information secondhand, and so let's get out there and make sure that they get it firsthand from us to vote for this levy.
Mr. Chairman. Brady.
A decade ago, I served as the first vice president of the new Sandusky Catholic school system. So I have a little different perspective on this, on this issue. And you'll be able to figure out my perspective when I tell you that two weeks ago, I was permitted by our pastor of the three Catholic parishes to actually speak to parishioners as they left Catholic masses on Sunday. That should punctuate how serious this issue is. The Catholic Church typically stays out of politics, and they stay out of issues like this, but I think that they realize how important it is for our school system, our public school system, and, and our community to pass this issue. We have good, a good Catholic school system, but we're only as good as our public school system. And we have an opportunity as a community to make that the very best we can make it with this vote. That's where my support lies.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I echo everybody's sentiments tonight. I do want to emphasize that our students are the most important because they are our future. So providing opportunities for them to have a first-class education, I think that's the most important.
There's been a motion and second, and I think everyone has had the opportunity to participate in the discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Good luck to the school system. Further items of new business?
Mr. Murray.
Ms. Cresser.
I'd like to ask consent agenda.
Oh, yes, thank you. Commissioners, you've all received a memorandum from Mrs. Cresser and me. We've had some conversations at the table about adopting a consent agenda, and so Mrs. Cresser did some research, put together the memorandum, we put together some proposed changes to the commission rules. And I don't know if that is, I just want to get a sense from the table as to whether that's something you would like to take up tonight, whether you wanted to, us to put it formally on the agenda at the next meeting. What is your thought in that regard? Mr. Waddington.
I, I vote on it tonight. I know, I'm in my ninth year now on the commission table, and to vote on 12 different chemicals, you know, it's just insane. Same thing with the land bank. If we have four or five land bank properties that we'd condense into one vote, let's do it, there's no need to be here three hours. So if we, you know, we already the pack, it's, we understand we're voting that. So I fully support, and I, I would be open to voting on it tonight.
Okay, all right. Is that a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Second.
There's been a motion and second. Further discussion? You know, we do have a lot of routine, and just for the folks at, at home, let me just recap this. So a lot of communities, a lot of legislatures have what's called a consent agenda, and we have these things that come up every year, an EPA permit for the wastewater treatment plant, or for the water treatment plant, or regular items of land bank business, or as Mr. Waddington indicated, the purchase of 15 different chemicals with, with names that really, really stress and test the commission clerk, in terms of getting the pronunciation right, although you're pretty good at it, you really get it. But it's, it's a way for these routine items to be grouped, and then, and there are some rules that have been spelled out, so it's the kind of things that I'm talking about. If any commissioner at the beginning of the process says, I'd like to set this one aside and vote on this one separately, that's automatic. It's a one, it's a one-person vote to take that outside of the consent agenda. And it's just a way to streamline the meetings so that we have more time and attention to the really important things that are in front of the issue, in front of the city. So there's been a motion and second. Further discussion? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
That motion is, passes. Thank you. So absent new items, our items of new business, we'll turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any items related to the city, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts. Seeing no one rushing to the microphone, I wonder if someone cared to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, you want to present that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Before we adjourn, Mrs. Cresser, we have a item of, a basket of goodie, goodies, goodies for you, and reading material for the time that you are away. We will miss you, and we know that you'll be back very soon, and we wish you all the luck in the world, and we're confident that Paige will sub for you well, but we also know that you won't be very far from your phone if we need something, too. So thank you very much, and Godspeed. We stand adjourned? Well, I got to sign this stuff.